Eileen, it looks like we're ready to start.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Howell Township Zoning Board of Adjustment, Monday, January 22nd, 2024. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 11th, 2023, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Yasbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on December 11th, 2023, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on December 11th, 2023, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and for your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits at the front and the rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and a dehorn appropriate to judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Barillo.
Here.
Mr. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Mertens.
Here.
Mr. Roscoe.
Here.
Mr. Stanton is excused. Mr. Ryan.
Here.
Ms. Scottson.
Here.
And Chairman Sayah.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Everyone, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Andy, can we have a swearing-in of the professionals, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. You swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God.
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Jennifer Beam.
Your professionals are sworn.
Thank you. Okay, item five on the agenda, approval of minutes. Reorganization in regular meeting, 8 January 2024. Eligible voters: Barillo, Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Roscoe, Scottson, Stanton, Ryan, and Sayah. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We got a motion?
I'll second that.
We got a second. Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
And Mr. Sayah.
Yes.
Minutes approved.
Thank you. Eileen, item six, vouchers. Do we have any vouchers?
No vouchers tonight.
Okay, item seven, correspondence. Do we have any correspondence?
I have three things for correspondence.
One at a time, please.
Okay. Case number BA 2315 Stanley Cryla will be carried to later date with notice.
So, those folks that are here for case number BA 23-15 Stanley Cryla, this application is being carried to a further later date with notice.
With notice, yes.
Yes. And current expiration is April 2nd, 2024. Okay, Eileen, next one.
Case number BA 2306 Gateway Industrial 175 LLC will be carried to March 11th, 2024 with notice.
Okay, for anyone that's here for case number BA 23-06 Gateway Industrial 175 LLC, this application is being carried to March 11th, 2024 with notice.
Yes.
All right, what's the third one?
Charlie has a letter about a resolution that he'd like to talk about. I'm not sure now or later.
Well, we'll do it now. Go ahead, Charlie.
Yeah, so if you recall, we had the Fernando Campfield application, Fernando Campfield, I apologize, come to us within the last two meetings. They were approved. One of the requirements in my letter was that they obtained an LOI for some mat wetlands around the rear of the site. Subsequent to that and prior to tonight, they provided an environmental report to us from the boys engineering who've been before this board numerous times. It was in their professional opinion that based on a site visit that there was no wetlands present on the site nor any wetlands buffers. Had they presented that to us at the time of the hearing, we probably would have struck the requirement of an LOI as a condition of the approval. Being that we're memorializing the resolution today, you know, if the board should act favorably on it, I would carry that recommendation that they don't need to get the LOI. I think the professional recommendation should satisfy that requirement.
Thank you, Charlie. Andy, you tracking?
I am.
All right, good.
If the board approves the resolution, if, on the motion with that amendment, and then I'll make the change and send it on to Eileen.
Okay. That was the Celeste Ferendo Campfield?
Correct.
Yes. All right, thank you, Eileen. Resolutions before the board. Zoning Board Attorney. Resolution appointing Andy Baer of Pashman and Stein. Eligible voters: Barillo, Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Stanton, Ryan, and Sayah. May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion?
I'll second that.
We have a second. Roll call, please, Eileen.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Zoning Board Attorney. Resolution approving Charles Conliff, T and M. Eligible voters: Barillo, Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Stanton, Ryan, and Sayah. May I have a motion, please?
Yeah, that's right. He's engineer.
Engineer.
Charlie and I can share our duties.
I'll make a motion.
Charlie got a raise on that one?
We have a motion. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Thank you. Zoning Board Planner. Jennifer Beam of Leon and Avakian. Eligible voters: Barillo, Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Roscoe, Stanton, and Sayah. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
We got a second. Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Zoning Board Licensed Tree Expert. Resolution appointing Shari Spiro, CME Associates. Eligible voters: Barillo, Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Roscoe, Stanton, and Sayah. May I have a roll call? Motion, please.
I'll make them.
Mertens?
Mertens.
Second, Matt.
Second, Hughes. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Mr. Chairman, just take a second to interrupt. We didn't say it last week. I just want to say how fortunate we are to have this group of professionals helping us, teaching us, continue to learn a lot from them, and I just wanted to let it be known that we really appreciate the professionals that we have.
I second that for sure. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, case number BA 23-20. Janine and Joseph Maroon. Bulk variance approval to construct a two-story additions to a single-family dwelling. Eligible voters: Barillo, Cantor, Mertens, Ryan, and Sayah. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Cantor.
Second that motion.
Ryan. Roll call, please, Eileen.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Okay. Case number BA 23-17. Celeste Ferendo Campfield. This is a resolution granting bulk variance approval to construct a two-story, single-family dwelling. Eligible voters: Mertens, Stanton, Ryan, and Sayah. This motion should include the inclusion of the LOI that it's already been satisfied. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion based on the amendment that we made, the recommendation of our engineer.
You're not, but you're not an eligible person. Mertens, Ryan, Sayah, period.
Mertens made the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I thought it was Mr. Cantor. I apologize 100%.
No worries. I will second that motion.
Mr. Ryan makes the second. Roll call, please, Eileen.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Thank you. Okay, applications before the board. Case number BA 23-18 Cranberry Road Holdings. The type, this is a conditional use variance, bulk variance, and preliminary and final major site plan approval. Application of Cranberry Road Holdings as applicant and owner seeking conditional use variance, bulk variance, and preliminary and final major site plan approval for the construction of a 2,130 square foot office building for a contractor's use with associated parking, equipment, trailer storage, and outdoor material storage in the SED 1 zone on premises known as Block 184, Lot 24, 383 Cranberry Road. Andy?
Yes. Mr. Sardo, how are you?
Good evening.
Don't want to swear?
Yeah, let's do that.
We'll want to introduce and then we'll...
Good evening, board members. My name's John Sardo. I'm the applicant's attorney from the law firm Giordano Haller and Sisla. I have with me tonight the professional expert witnesses that I plan to call. And I guess if you'd like, we could swear them in together now.
That would be fine, Mr. Sardo. Thank you.
Okay. Professionals, raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last, starting down the end and coming this way.
Want to come up to the mic?
I mean, are the mics active?
Yeah. Yeah, you should be...
Yeah, so you necessarily need to be...
Qualifications as well now? Or no?
You want to qualify now too or will...
No, no. Let's just, let's just get the swearing-in one at a time.
Okay.
Just speak, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Maeve Desmond, that's D-E-S-M-O-N-D from Inside Engineering. I'm a professional planner.
Adam Anzolin, A-N-Z-Z-O-L-I-N. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey with Anzolin Architectural.
Patrick Ward, W-A-R-D with Inside Engineering, professional engineer.
The witnesses are sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So, Mr. Sardo, who's going to be your first witness?
Patrick Ward, our civil engineer.
Mr. Ward, can you please put your credentials on the record?
Sure. With the firm Inside Engineering. I've been with Inside, this is my 15th year. Been a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey for 10 years. License is current and valid. I've been before this zoning board at least one time, and I've been in front of the Township Planning Board numerous times, and then throughout Monmouth and Ocean County and elsewhere.
Where'd you go to school?
Drexel University, Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering.
All right, thank you. We accept your credentials.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Take it away. Okay. I'll sit down if you want. So, Patrick, this, this site, as, we've had a history with this site? Well, let me, I guess just address the board. The applicant and the application got prior approvals from the planning board, 2015 and 2021, and just a general outline of what we're doing is amending that site plan, which now due to a change in zoning in 2021 comes before this board. We're now in the SED 1 zone instead of the SED, and we're a conditional use. I just wanted to preview that. So, we're essentially amending the site plan layout that we got approved in 2021, which Patrick's going to walk through now. Patrick, if you could, could you just give the background and describe the plans you prepared and submitted?
Sure. If you'd be so kind to pull up the existing aerial rendering that we prepared, just to give the board a sense of where we are in town, and then I'll get into what the current proposal is and compare and contrast to what was approved by the planning board of the township in 2021.
Hey, John, I'm sorry to interrupt. Was this submitted with the application or do we want to mark or...
We're going to mark this. This, yeah, we'll mark these. These are exhibits based off the site plan that was submitted.
Correct. Okay. So, subject property is 383 Cranberry Road, Block 184, Lot 24. Property's about three acres, and as Mr. Sardo stated, we're in the SED 1 zone.
A16.
So, the applicant, which, this is, this is A16 for existing aerial. I should have 10 copies for you.
You can have one?
No, 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 I have plenty. You can hand it to the board.
Okay.
Yep.
Oh, okay, we'll get one.
Yeah, we could do that as A17.
Hand these out?
Yep.
And John, maybe just, or Patrick, tell us what...
Yeah, I will, yep. I just want to make sure I have a, and then this can be A18, sorry.
Charlie, you got a laser pointer? John?
Hey, what was it, 18? I'm sorry. Am I handing this one out to you, sir?
Yes, yes. So, I'll start with, what's on the screen now?
Why don't you wait for the board member?
Thank you. Oh, yeah, we've got another one for you.
Oh, oh, you're passing them out.
We're taking one and one. Go ahead, move them all.
Mr. Chair, I'll proceed when you feel everyone's ready.
184. So, that's 182. This is 184, right here. 184, 24, right here. Okay, so you have circled on the drawing the location that we're talking about right now. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'll just describe the three exhibits that were just distributed. A16 is an existing conditions aerial. The image is from September 6, 2023, so relatively recent. It's from the Near Map Imaging Service that our office utilizes, and the subject property is central to this image. There is some, off of the screen here, there's some areas to the north and south that aren't shown, which is okay at the moment, but it really wants to, the reason for this is to show the board what the property looks like from the sky today, and then also what, just a taste of what surrounds us today, and we'll describe that in further detail. A17 is a proposed color rendering of the site in its proposed form at the current application. Again, superimposed on the same aerial image, just again to give the board some context as to what we're proposing and how it kind of works with or, you know, marries with adjacent uses and properties. And then A18 is, serves two purposes. One is to provide the board just an updated zoning table and also a list of the conditional use requirements. It was something noted in the T and M review letter, and it's a checklist item to provide a conditional use statement. It's an applicant's position that A18 will serve as that conditional use statement and also provide the board some clarity as to where we comply with the conditional use requirements and where we do not, and also to provide some clarity on the parking calculation, which upon the initial submission, we did not have it in referencing the trade contractor use. That's the conditional use we're seeking approval for tonight. That handout does reference the trade contractor use, which has different parking calculation.
When you say the initial, was that the initial to the planning board or the initial coming here?
Coming here with the submitted plans that you have before you.
Okay, got it.
They have not been revised. We just revised the table.
Mr. Chair, they wouldn't be here if they complied with the conditional use standards.
Right.
They'd be at the planning board, so they don't comply with those standards.
Right.
Right. And we'll provide testimony in support of that conditional use variance that we're seeking. So, just a little background on the applicant. This is, this property is owned by SO Brothers Paving or operated by SO Brothers Paving. All of their construction operations emanate from this property, and they have off-site, today, off-site offices elsewhere. They're seeking site plan approval tonight to improve the property with a new administrative building for their business operation and make this property, and continue to make this property their long-term home here in Howell. So, the site is located on Cranberry Road. It's about a quarter mile east of the Cranberry-Yellawbrook Road intersection. As you can see on this image in front of you, we're generally surrounded by similar uses. To the east is Monmouth County Highway Department Yard. To the south is a multiple-tenant contractor yard, which goes way beyond off-page to the south. To the west is a private commercial slash contractor yard. And then across the street, and I'll point it with my laser pointer on the big screen, up here, this is the George Harms, I call it the George Harms Yard side entrance. Their main entrance is around the corner, but that's...
And what's directly across from you?
Yep, and I'm glad you brought that up. And directly across from us, so there's the Harms entrance, and then what you see here directly to the north is the, the rear end of the second phase of Equestria. And its rear entrance is up to the northeast off-page here to that second phase. So, what you can see at the very tip there is a wooded area on that south side of the Equestria development, and they, as part of their approval, they have a 100-foot wide perimeter buffer that was, that was established as part of that whole application and approval process. So, in terms of zoning, we're the SED 1, we have, Equestria's in the PRC, the Planned Retirement Community Zone, and that was established as part of that development. To the east of us is actually a zone boundary. The Monmouth County Yard is in the Agricultural Rural Estate 6 Zone, which is technically a residential zone. As you can see, the property today is almost entirely disturbed, and if you were to move the equipment and vehicles and some of the mounds of dirt, you will, the property is nearly 100% impervious, and it's a combination of pavement and compacted gravel, crushed gravel and the like that's been there for, you know, numerous years.
But it's own residential, right?
What's that, Miss, up, parsite?
The county property is own residential.
The county is a residential zone, AR.
So, you have the residential zone immediately to the east and the residential zone across the road to the north, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then west and south is non-residential. We have two curb cuts at the property today, as you can see, coming from Cranberry Road. Right now, today, the dark line, which is the shadow from the fence, there's a chain link fence that comes right across the front there, and it really separates the, a front, rough parking area, as you can see, and then the rear yard, the actual enclosed yard of the, of the use. The area in the front is used for employee parking, and it's not structured delineated, as you can see, that's really mostly, there's pavement patches below, but a lot of it's just crushed gravel. Behind the fence, we have some structures. We have an existing garage down in the southwest corner. It's a Quonset hut, as referenced to Mr. Conliff's review letter, where the, denotes Block 184. There's another garage-type structure with a gable roof, and then to the west of that is a, is in effect a temporary construction trailer that's been there for, you know, a semi-permanent basis. Proposed conditions, and as I go through these, if you can pull up A17, if you don't mind the color rendering, I'll explain how, what we're proposing tonight is, what we feel similar to what was approved in 2021. So, the applicant intends to upgrade the site and the building so that it meets the needs of the business today and improve its functionality and aesthetics of the site at the same time. So, to go back further, the applicant was actually before the planning board in 2015 for something that looks completely different than what you'll see tonight. They were approved for new buildings and other site improvements. At the time, the applicant felt it met their needs, but in short order, they never perfected that approval because it really didn't meet their needs in terms of space, function, and the like. As a result, we were, Insight was not a part of the 2015 application, neither was Mr. Sardo or Mr. Anzolin, but in 2021, all three of us were retained by the applicant to, in effect, fix that approval and come back to something that would work for them, and it's very similar to what you see in front of you. The applicant sought approval from the planning board for a different building design and layout from 2015, and it was ultimately approved. And with that approval, variances were granted for setbacks, the buffer to the north and the buffer to the east, to both residential districts, and we will address those in testimony as we go forward.
So, Mr. Ward.
Yes, ma'am.
That never got perfected, correct?
2021?
Correct.
It was never fully perfected, correct?
So, therefore, you're coming back, you're looking to demolish the majority of structures on the site. I think that the buffer situation needs to be reevaluated.
And we agree with that, and we are prepared to address that, yes.
Okay.
We agree that it is a, called fresh, fresh start on that.
Right.
That type of relief, absolutely. We just wanted to mention it because at the time it was granted, and that led to the site layout similar to what you see here. So, tonight, we're seeking to, in effect, amend that 2021 approval by changing the buildings only. So, the goal here is to keep both garages on-site that I mentioned and construct a permanent office building for administrative staff, and that's located, you know, central north of the property there, behind, in the yard area. The operations of the site from a construction standpoint and the operations of the business, the paving operation, will not change as a result of this application. We're just proposing an administrative building to bring that staff from off-site on-site, so in effect, the only change here is bringing in the administrative personnel.
So, just if I can interrupt you for a second, but when we look at the landscaping that's along the right-of-way and the landscaping from the building, that, that's all oriented similar to how it was in 2021, correct?
Correct, so, yes.
And then the, the, you know, what I'll call the office building, which is highlighted in the center there, if you want to hit it with the laser pointer?
Yeah.
That, that's slightly shifted back from where the, the building was in the 2021 approval. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
So, it was a larger building. So it was a larger building. The front garage was, was to be removed, and there was a larger building across the front that was about eight or nine feet closer to Cranberry Road than what we're proposing now. So we're proposing the administrative offices in this two thousand one hundred thirty square-foot building here, single-story, prefabricated structure. We're proposing, on the bottom, if you could pan down, there's material storage bins on the south side for, to support the operations of the business. Those were approved in two thousand twenty-one. They are to remain to be proposed. And the company today has storage containers, enclosed storage containers here. They're actually on the east side of the property today, over here. They're going to be relocated to the south side, you know, not unlike what was proposed in two thousand twenty-one. They were proposed to remain and be relocated on-site.
But zoning has changed, correct? So now you're conditional use, and there are definitely conditions regarding outdoor storage, buffer compliance, as well as other items that were not in effect in two thousand twenty-one. So I just want the, the board to be aware that they don't comply with the buffer requirements, they don't comply with the outdoor storage materials requirements, and that's problematic, honestly. Like, I get it that it was what it was in two thousand twenty-one, but here we are in two thousand twenty-four, and it's a new day here in Howell. So you are required now to comply with the buffer requirements and the outdoor storage requirements, and you didn't perfect the approval from two thousand twenty-one, so you can't keep relying on it if you didn't perfect it. So the outdoor storage is in the buffer. The, the the requirements are fifty feet. You're not there. You're not there in the front either. So there's relief that's required associated with this application, associated with the conditional use, right? That's why you're here, D three requirement. But I would say to the board, these are things that we have consistently required of applicants have coming in. This site, I get it, it has an old approval, but they didn't perfect it, and here they are back, so they're still subject to these, these requirements, and they need to adjust their site plan to comply with what we're asking for. So I, I mean, it's up to you guys to decide how you want to proceed, but I don't support the relief associated with the buffer requirements on, what is that, the Nordlys, the Nordly property line and the Easterly property line. They don't comply with either. And you guys have not been a board that grants that buffer relief ever.
If I may.
Yeah.
The buffering requirements adjacent to residential zones.
It's residential use or zone, not just zone?
Correct. It's part of the conditional use standard, but it was also part of, it's also elsewhere in the ordinance, correct, that, and was a variance that we required at the planning board and we were granted?
But this is new. This is a new application.
I guess I'm just saying, the fifty-foot buffer to residential zones.
You don't just get to rely upon the fact that you got relief based upon a different use. This is a different use in the buffer. You need relief from it.
Granted, the, the use hasn't changed, but we're prepared to put on the testimony and proofs for the.
I, I don't, I don't support the relief. You guys can listen to what they have to say and decide how you want to proceed, but we don't grant relief from the fifty-foot buffer, period. Up to you guys.
So Jen, for clarity, to the east.
Is A R E six, three? Six. A R E six zone. Across the street is Equestria.
What, what's the buffer requirement between Equestria and this property?
Fifty feet on their property.
It's fifty, it's not a hundred, okay, it's fifty.
Fifty feet.
Okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't take into consideration the width of the road either. It's fifty feet on their property, and then the Easterly property line is a fifty-foot buffer as well because immediately to the east is an A R E six zone.
What's the alternative if they do nothing with the property? What is the use now? Charlie?
I mean, I think that would be up for the applicant to give more information on the use, but, I mean, you've heard them make representations. They were before the planning board in two thousand fifteen, never perfected the approval, you know, under a different professional team. They were before the board again sometime after two thousand twenty-one, you know, got approval, never perfected it, and now we're here for, you know, a different board, but for the third time to the town. I think that's the concern is, you know, this is the third shot at the apple, and we're still trying to get a perfected site plan for a use that's been operating there, and I think has been allowed to operate there with the understanding that, you know, we're gonna get a perfected site plan at some point, you know, and now it's eight years removed from the first time they were, were one of the boards at the township.
John, is there any violations at the site?
As Charlie iterated, they, there are. They're basically operating with a temporary C O that was issued, predicated on the fact that they were going to perfect the site plan. Since that has not been perfected, the C C O has come due, so to speak. We would recommend that if there's any approval, that there be some kind of sunset clause because this has been dragged out for such a long time, say that all building approvals and permits have to be applied for and the site perfected within a year so that a permanent C C O can be issued.
If I may just add to this, I mean, this is not news to us, the applicant, that is, and we worked with Mr. Howard in the community development office. I'm aware of the issue. When we decided after the two thousand twenty-one approval to come back and modify the building, those were discussions I had had, understanding that we were eager to go forward with most of the development on this project, but we couldn't until we perfected the site plan. But we were ready, willing, and able to put in landscaping, paving, getting the sewer put in, and it was all predicated on us coming before the board on another application with the understanding that, you know, this is it. We're going to perfect the site plan, and essentially, the changes that we're proposing are the last ones, and we gotta go forward with the development if the board were to approve it.
I mean, I would just say to the board that, like, they're relying upon relief that they requested based upon prior approvals that they never perfected. So you don't get to, you don't get the benefit of those variances when you don't perfect the site plan. You need to come back, and now they're new because you never perfected the approvals that you came for historically. You don't get to say, oh, I asked for this, you approved it, but then I didn't, I didn't move forward on it, so I get to keep carrying it forward. That's not how it works. You never perfected the site plan that you got these variances for. You don't get the benefit of the buffer variances moving forward when you never perfected the site plan historically. And I'm not putting that on you because I know this is a new team, right? So I know that. I'm just saying to the board, they don't get to carry those, those variances when they never perfected the approvals that they got historically.
Jen, looking at this site.
Yeah.
What they're trying to accomplish, can they get there with modifications?
I mean, if they, if they comply with the buffer, they would probably comply with the, the coverage, which is also a variance that they're seeking, but I don't think, I mean, the buffer in the front is never gonna happen, right? They're, because they need a buffer here, right? So they're gonna still require relief regardless, but the buffer to the east, which is against the A R E six zone, has not been complied with. The buffer against Equestria has not been complied with. They need a variance for lot coverage, which if they complied with some of these buffer requirements, probably could be complied with, but we just don't know. I mean, I'm gonna leave it to the applicant to decide how they want to proceed, but I'm just saying, like, you can't comply, you can't rely upon relief given to an approval that you did not perfect, and then come back and say, well, we got that approval before. You didn't perfect the approval. And this is a, we do not grant buffer relief, like, easily, period.
Charlie, did you look at the calculations?
So, yeah, so they do need a variance for impervious coverage. I think you'll find on the applicant's plan, they indicated they, it's actually a net reduction in impervious coverage from what's existing there on the site. So it still does need a technical variance because it exceeds, exceeds the seventy percent that's permitted in the zone, but it's a net reduction from what's existing. This all goes back to how much of this cover has historically been there, how much of it was, you know, previously approved for prior site plans, which have also never been perfected. You know, to Jen's point with the buffers, right, along the frontage in the Easterly side yard, you know, the parking area, the angled parking along the property frontage would certainly, for full compliance of the fifty-foot buffer, would have to be relocated elsewhere, you know, along the Easterly property line, where I think there's some larger vehicle parking space along the east property line. That's almost entirely within the fifty-foot buffer. You would be looking at significant changes to the site plan if they were to comply with those buffer requirements in the entirety. Having said that, you know, I believe Eileen provided us with, like, what the last site plan they submitted for residential compliance to the planning board. What's being shown is relatively in conformity to what was approved at the planning board, but I think you've heard Jen speak elaborately on, you know, not relying on prior approvals. You know, this is a new application. This is a different board. There's different standards as far as the conditional use requirements in place right now.
And they didn't perfect those approvals. I mean, I think that if they perfected those approvals, we'd be having a different conversation, but they didn't. So now we're here as is, like, as it, as if it was square one.
So we're leapfrogging from existing condition to where we are right now.
So here's the question. Why were the approvals not perfected?
When, when you say perfected, you mean to the point where we had signed plans?
Yeah.
And pulling permits?
Uh-huh.
Because we knew, I mean, we're significantly towards compliance, but knowing that there was a desire to change the building, it seemed not to make sense to continue those efforts knowing you were going to change the building. Now, we are where we are today, of course, and had I had the knowledge that the buffers would be considered in the way I'm now understanding they'd be considered, I may have taken a different tact many, many, many months ago. But, and I guess begs the question, you know, if, if we were to just rely on the prior approval and now perfect it, I don't know if that's an open question or if you've made the consideration, but in my mind, it was, well, we can go ahead and perfect the prior approval and go, go, go ahead, or we need to make the minor modifications that we hope to make, and that's why we're here tonight. We've sat now for about a year in, in line between, you know, we initially applied to the planning board. Several months went by. We found out that the, about the zone change. We transferred the application in the summer or the fall, and now we're finally here at the hearing. So, you know, I guess we have a choice. Proceed and try to make modifications in light of the more recent comments that we're just finding out about, or going forward with the prior approval in two thousand twenty-one.
Well, if you go forward with the prior approval of two thousand twenty-one, John, would that satisfy the violations?
It would.
So there, there's your answer.
There was, of course, the concern of the applicant was related to the modifications to the primary building, which was why we were coming in for the modification. And we were always happy, by the way, to, like I, like I stated early, we're always happy to perfect, do the landscaping and try to phase that in as soon as we were able to. We weren't able to, nor were we asked, frankly, to perfect it and to do that right away. So, so, you know, now it's hindsight at this current moment, but.
I would just say that if you were to perfect your prior approvals, which have whatever relief associated with it, is included in that, in that resolution, that may help you moving forward because right now, I would say they should comply with the buffer requirements.
Yes.
Right? So because you never perfected the prior approvals, therefore, this is like a new crack at it, and you are, you are adjoining a residential lot to the east and to the north. So those are variances that this board does not take lightly, and so, you know, I mean, it's up to you guys to how you want to proceed, but this board does not grant relief from that buffer requirement lightly, just so you know.
Mr. Sardo, would you like to take ten and speak to your client?
Yes.
Very good. Eileen, we're gonna take ten minutes.
The board will now take a ten-minute break and reconvene at seven fifty-five P. M.
Thank you.
The meeting will now reconvene.
Mr. Sardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Discussed the matter with my client professionals. We'd like to ask for an adjournment to be carried to the, the next meeting without notice so we can evaluate how we can react to the comments we've received this evening.
That's fine, Mr. Sardo. I just, you know, it's, it's, it's significant from what we are understanding, just so you know.
No, no, I've, I've heard the message loud and clear.
Okay.
And I don't know that.
Hey, John, just wait one sec on the scheduling.
We do have three applications for the next meeting. The meeting on the February twenty-sixth, we have three applications. March eleventh, we have four applications. And March twenty-fifth, we have two applications. And April eighth, we have nothing yet.
I'm only pointing out that if you adjourn, if you cover, if you carry one meeting, if that's a minimum of the board, there's a lot of other.
Would you want to go to April eighth and we'll give you an extension?
And April eighth, there's, that's the open meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess that's agreeable to us. We'll give you an extension time act.
April thirtieth, extension, or Andy, a little further out? What do you think?
I think April thirtieth.
Okay. That, does that work for you, Mr. Sardo?
It does, and I guess if the opportunity presents itself that we can come back earlier, I'll, I'll speak with the board secretary and see if we can arrange that.
You may have to re-know it.
Yeah, no, I mean, I understand.
We, we have full agendas going forward.
Understood.
Okay. All right, so application B eight twenty-three dash eighteen, Cranberry Road Holdings. This application is being carried to April eighth, two thousand twenty-four with extension of time to thirty April, two thousand twenty-four.
And you said without notice? I just, I don't know that I heard.
Without further notice, yes.
Thank you.
Eileen, we're good?
Yes, we're all good.
Thank you, Mr. Sardo. Okay, Eileen, is there any other further business of the board?
No, there is not.
All right, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Take on.
We got a motion in a second. All in favor? All right, Eileen, this meeting is adjourned.